I'll begin the meeting once everyone at the tables comes back. It'll just be a couple more minutes. Hello again, let's call this meeting to order. Roll call please, Ms. Donna.
Ms. Williams, Ms. Miller, Ms. Chesney, Ms. Kearns, Ms. Lanning, Mr. Moore, Mr. Richmond.
Okay, everyone's here. Cognitions, is that you, Stacia?
Is this on? Yay, good, thank you. Tonight, I'm going to present to you the names of the individuals from the St. Joseph's School District and their work with letters. Currently seventy-two educators have successfully completed letters, which really stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. That means they completed both volumes, Volume One and Volume Two. And they demonstrated a strong commitment to implementing those evidence-based reading, instructional grounded in the science of reading. Each volume, I'll say that again, each volume represents a significant investment of time, which is approximately a hundred and forty total hours of professional study and application. And this is through the Missouri Re-lead and Exceed Initiative, underscoring our educators' focus on continuous improvement and student success. I'm extremely humbled and proud of our work of our educational leaders in this. I can tell you when I first stepped into the role as Director of Curriculum Instruction, it was that teachers would just sign up for these cohorts. Unfortunately, we didn't have enough substitutes at times to get our most asked at-risk, the teachers who were serving in our most asked-risk sites out of the classroom. And so what we did was, two years ago, we put it on our Professional Learning Day. And it became a professional learning path. And so educators then attend on the Professional Learning Days in our district, and they complete the module work ahead of time and along the time. So I'm grateful for them. Not only do we have those that have completed Volume One and Volume Two, but I'm also presenting the names of our early learning educators. And there were seventeen educators that have completed the Early Childhood Letters. And they represented Lake and Mark Twain. And then Lindberg as well, there's an instructional coach that supports that and actually completed that volume as well. And then Diallo DeVal, who has completed that work. The last thing I'm going to share is, in the announcement, it says we have twenty building administrators. Well, as of last night, Dr. Caleb Johnson completed his letters work, and so we actually have twenty-one. And so we are all so proud of the twenty-one building administrators and district leaders who completed letters for administrators. Again, these leaders studied what our educators encountered in Volume One and Volume Two, but they also look at it from a systems and process standpoint. How do I design my schedule, my school schedule, around the components of literacy? So together, these educators and leaders exemplify the St. Joseph's School District's commitment to literacy excellence, and I'm grateful for them.
Okay, everyone, audience participation. As always, everyone will get up to three minutes. After your time is up, complete your sentence, and then I need you to move on. If you continue to speak, your mic will be cut off. I'm asking everybody to be respectful. If there are any issues, you will be escorted out of the theater. Odd numbers right here, even right there, everybody knows, everyone knows the drill by now. If you want to begin to come forward. And keep in mind, it takes lots of courage, you know, to come up here and speak, even if it's a person that you do not agree with. Our board is just asking, continue to be respectful of everybody. Also, if you could attempt to keep in the order of your numbers. As you approach, give your number and your name. If you're not on the list, you will not be able to speak. Okay, number one?
Hey, thank you, Nate Barron. Wow, that presentation, I think, probably just opened up a whole new can of worms. She done a great job. Oh, I'm sorry, can I start over? Can you start my time again? Okay, hey, thank you, thank you for letting me speak. I think that presentation was very insightful, and it may open up a whole new can of worms, I don't know. A lot more numbers for people to see and think about. I'll just stick to what I have written. Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I won't take up much of everybody's time. I'm not going to spend it up here berating or disrespecting you, but I'm also not giving you a pat on the back. I don't know everything that goes on at all times. The whole process has been broken, and I think a lot of you can agree with that. I just want to say how important it is that as adults and parents, we must act the way we expect our children to act, with kindness, understanding, and compassion, no matter what happens. Please don't take this statement as a free pass for the stress and heartache it has caused, but anger and disrespect yields the wrong results. I was writing some notes down as she was speaking, and I got a sidebar with her and asked her a few questions. The Title I, discovery, there's a lot of discovery, discovery, which seems to like, oh, it just shocked Dr. Hedgecourt. Sounds like you inherited a mess, and you're trying to figure things out. It's rough, it's rough when you inherit a thirty-million-dollar flip-flop. That's unreal. The person, I asked her who was responsible. She said the person before you should have discovered that. That's unreal. Twenty-four-million-dollar flip, is that common? She says no. Late claiming Title I equals no money, not good. Inaccuracy seemed to be a key word through her whole presentation. Inaccuracy led us to where we're at now. And it seems to be a freight train that's, you're not going to stop it. I worked for the railroad, you're not going to stop it. It's coming, and you're going to make your decision. I myself am the treasurer for my local unit. I'm responsible for financial reports, audits, in a timely manner. So I know what it's like. If I don't turn my stuff in, I'm getting letters and phone calls, and it's not good. So anyway, her presentation was great, appreciate it. I just want to end. You could give us all the best Thanksgiving and Christmas present by keeping our three wonderful high schools. I want to say, God bless all the brave, wonderful children in this room. Thank you very much.
Hi, sorry, that's a little loud. My name is Melissa Corey. I'm a librarian at Rubidu Middle School. My career actually started at Benton. I live, work, and believe in St. Joseph's. I would like to express my thoughts as a community member, parent, and staff member this evening. I believe Plan Four B R can be modified to retain both Pershing and Field as elementary schools and Rubidu as a middle school. This change would have a minimal impact on finances while moving fewer staff and students. For staffing, Rubidu as an elementary school would need thirty-four teachers, whereas Pershing and Field have thirty-five teachers currently, which is not a significant difference in cost. However, there are costs to convert Rubidu to an elementary school, including a playground, fencing, and restroom facilities. We simply do not have the money to do this at this time. Rubidu was built as a middle school and has up-to-date facilities that are suited for middle school. And enrollment projections are close to capacity, but could be managed if Field feeds to Bodie as it does now. There are also equity issues among middle schools if Rubidu were to move to a closed Lafayette High School. Those teams would have three gyms, a turf football field, track, and a weight room. And while my own children would benefit from this inequality, I don't want that. I want equality for each and every one of our middle school students. Thank you. Retaining Rubidu as a middle school leaves Lafayette open, allowing the board to be creative with the space, allowing for early learning, alternative education, and English Language Learner Center, and it could house those programs. It could also be utilized as fine arts center or middle school athletic programs, allowing Keatley to be retired. However, these choices come down to what the board's priorities are, the impact on finances or the impact on staff and students. It is clear that Plan Two R is still the most cost-efficient plan available as it saves more than seven-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand than Plan Four B R by 2030. But the bottom line is that Plan E is still the least disruptive option to staff and students. So all of this begs the following questions. Why are all of the schools slated to close on the north side of town? Why are we choosing a plan that puts multiple schools over capacity? And again, if cost is a concern, why is the plan selected to advance, not the most cost-effective? In light of this, I encourage the board, again, especially in light of the information we just heard, to consider a pause, do a full audit, hire a demographer, and reconvene this, allow our staff, students, and community to have a break from this. It has been a huge strain on families, friends, departments, and colleagues. And I think that most of all, you should rely on your most valuable asset, your staff, that will show up tomorrow and next week and the month after and the year after for these students, because we are not going anywhere. We are part of the solution, and I want to thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening, my name is Brent Corey, and I'm the librarian at Lafayette High School. At this point, we've all heard every type of appeal there is to justify each school's continued existence. And as a librarian, the Hunger Games metaphor is not lost on me, so I'll try to be brief. For two weeks after adopting Plan E, it seemed as though many people in the community had hope, until the measure was abruptly passed on. Since then, I've seen morale tank across my building and students lose faith in the democratic process. Again, speaking as a librarian, I'm a big fan of research, and there's no better resource, in my opinion, than firsthand accounts. So I'd like to share the facts on the ground from my small corner of Lafayette High School. In my time here, I've worked hard to make the library the heart of the building. Lately, I've seen that heart ripped out. After hearing the good name of Lafayette High School tarnished last week, I've had multiple students come to me since then to tell me their teachers were depressed, angry, forlorn, and that they were too. I don't blame them. But I also heard the one thing you never want to hear as an educator. "Mr. Corey, why should I even try the rest of the year? Why should I even try?" What do you say to that? Especially when my own heart is wrenched, because these closures affect my entire family. We're all losing a school. Beyond that, if we move to two mega schools, students will miss opportunities for sports and other activities, as there just won't be enough spots open for them. Last Friday, we saw three student athletes from each high school sign to play at the college level. Those opportunities will disappear for some students if we move to two schools. So I ask this, do what's right for everyone, figure out how to make Plan E work. I might even suggest asking the community to put their money where their mouth is by putting an operating levy on the ballot, a Three Schools Act, if you will. If not, and to quote Julius Caesar, "A lia iecta est, the die is cast." Please make sure the more financially responsible decision, and choose Plan Two R. Or, in light of tonight's information, perhaps it's time for caution, maybe hit pause for now, with only a semester and change to prepare for such a massive transformation to our school district. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Angie Hernandez, and I work at Lafayette High School. I have been a part of this district for twenty-five years. My husband, my mom, and I all graduated from Lafayette. This school is not just my workplace, it's my home, my history, and my heart. And I love my kids, and I love my staff. Lafayette is not just a building, it's a family. And so for many of our kids, this is the only place where they feel safe, supported, and truly seen. I want to speak for the students who will be hurt the most if Lafayette does close. We have kids who cannot thrive in a large building. They already struggle with big crowds and big classrooms. They come into our counseling center multiple times a day just to breathe, to talk, and to steady themselves. These are the students who do not trust easily, but they trust us. In a school of two thousand, that trust will break, and those kids will disappear into the background. And I am genuinely afraid for them. Our students show incredible heart. Recently, one of our students had organized a canned food drive because he knew classmates would not have a Thanksgiving dinner, and our Lafayette community rallied around him. The past few weeks have been emotionally overwhelming. I've cried pretty much every day. There's a heaviness on my chest that I cannot shake. And I know if I feel this way, I cannot imagine the fear, confusion that our kids are carrying. We also have to talk about what this process is doing to our community. It is tearing us apart. What used to be a healthy north-side, south-side rivalry has now turned into hostility and hateful comments. It's turning our kids against each other. And that is not safe, especially if the plan is to put them in the same building. This division will not magically disappear. It's creating wounds and anger that will follow our students into the building with them. Do we have a plan on how we're going to keep our kids safe? I'm concerned about the staff at the buildings that will be repurposed or closed. How will that be handled? Will we have a job? No community should have to feel this heartbreak. My daughter works at Benton, and she loves her kids as much as I love mine. And I don't want her, her students, or anyone else in this district to feel what we are feeling. I understand that a decision will be made, but our family will deeply be impacted regardless of your decision. Our kids need their school families, they need stability. They need trust and love and connections. Those things cannot simply be moved or rebuilt overnight. Please protect our kids, they deserve better.
Hi, my name is Jacey Davis, and I'm a junior at Lafayette High School. Little me has dreamed of being in high school and living the life I've seen all of my cousins and siblings live. Little did I know, right before my senior year, it'd all be taken away from me. No one but these kids who are hurting knows how it feels to walk these halls. They are silent and cold. You can see and feel the heartbreak in everyone. Last week, as I participated in the girls' basketball game, but all-city palms dance, it hit me that my high school experiences are slowly ending one by one. Every day, as I walk into school, I can't hold anything in. I cry, and I feel so sick, because how could one do this to so many children and adults? This year, I started my mom's second year working at Lafayette High School, and I've already made so many memories with her. And then it begins to hurt even more when I realize she may not even have a job next year. So not only am I losing my school, I'll lose the thing that keeps my family going and have to watch my mom go through it. No one deserves this, and I truly believe that it is unfair how these people can sit here and place votes on schools, but they're really our families. And how can you guys even possibly make that vote when you don't know how it feels to walk our halls, go to that lunchroom, and do the assignments in the classrooms? We have to try and act like everything is normal? No, I'm tired, I'm tired of that, and I'm tired of the thought of not knowing where I'll be next year. I know the choice is hard, so make it a little easier, and please, fight for a way to find, make the three model school work. When me and my classmates sat here for five hours waiting on the last vote that took place, we felt like we were finally listened to. Going home that night, I still felt uneasy, but I told myself, hey, they listen, so it can only go up from here, right? No, again, little did I know that another lie was, and we're right back where we started. These aren't schools, they are families and communities who are slowly turning against each other. I've always loved a north-side versus south-side competition, but I never thought it would come down to who got to keep their schools. I want all three, please.
Hello, my name is Remy Folk, and I'm a junior at Lafayette High School. I'd also like to mention that I attend Hilliard Technical Center and the Teaching Pathway Program. However, this entire experience has made me rethink my future on multiple occasions. Being a teacher is already one of the toughest jobs out there. And now, with this additional stress, not only on them regarding whether they will even have a job next year, but also on the kids they are teaching. Because I can tell you right now, that ever since my classmates and I got the news last week, it has not been a very productive time in any of my classes. And how can you expect it to be? These are real people this is affecting, not just numbers to rip out of their homes and shove into overpopulated buildings. You've heard this a million times, but these schools are our homes and our families. To handle this situation the way it has been handled to this point is deeply saddening. Giving us hope only to rip it away from under us is horrible. I didn't grow up in the north side. I attended Eugene Field, then Bodie Middle School, all of which had been on the chopping block one time or another. But I can tell you right now that the sense of community in the north end is something like you've never seen, and I cannot imagine who I would have become without it. If you all care about the people your vote affects, you will stop with the back and forth. You know what we want, keep all three schools open. Now make a decision and stick with it. Thank you for your time.
My name is Bo Tillman. I am a retired school teacher from Lafayette High School. I see a bunch of my kids, the former kids, out here in the audience tonight, and they're here for the same reasons that we're all here. You know, in nineteen fifty-four, my dad helped integrate the schools in the St. Joseph's Public School system. It wasn't an easy thing to do, but it had to be done, because it was the right thing to do. Now, you can always choose between what's right and what's easy. St. Joe, Missouri, did the right thing back then, and they integrated their schools immediately, while the rest of the country took their time and dragged it out and basically caused more heartache and more problems than they saw by just not getting it done in the first place. Here we are again. We have to make tough decisions, but not at the sacrifice of our kids. We can do better, we have to do better. You know, I talked government for twenty years, and I told my kids constantly, the classic example, and they can ask you, is any of them here remember, I talked about gerrymandering, and I use this school district as a classic example of what gerrymandering is. Now, if you really want to talk about that, I could talk about it for an hour and a half. I lectured on it for twenty years. But the point of it is, we know what we're doing, and it's not right for us to do it the way we're doing it. We can do better. These kids deserve better. We all have wonderful people that we went to school with. All of our schools have tremendous graduates that have done a lot of good things in life and in St. Joseph, Missouri, and throughout the country. Point of the matter is this. We have to decide what's more important for us in this town. Now, you wonder why our kids are leaving? Look at the mess we're leaving them right now. You wonder why they're not even going to want to stay here? I say this, put all differences aside, concentrate on our kids and what's best for them. Some kids don't work well in a two-thousand student environment. concentrate on our kids and what's best for them. Some kids don't work well in a 2,000 student environment. They need closer, more personal attention. I know that for a fact. And everybody in here that's worked in the school system, that works in counseling centers and classrooms, know what I'm saying is true. So St. Joe, it's on you, on all of us, to do the right thing for these kids.
Hello, I'm Rob Beck. I got a kid at a Gene Fairwood and a kid at Bodie, and I'd like to apologize in advance. I'm actually deathly afraid of public speaking, but my kid told me I needed to do this, so. First, I'd like to ask a question. Do you guys all know what you're voting for tonight? Because last week, it seemed like you guys were confused. So I just want to make sure you guys know. I listen to these board meetings at home while multitasking and everything, and I seem to have an understanding better than you guys did. That's all I'm saying. And instead of overcrowding the elementary schools, why not just leave Fairwood and Persing open the way they are? Then like the Missouri Librarian of the Year Melissa Corey said, that you can just, you know, not spend the money on relocating everything. And after hearing from that financial person, I think we probably could just stay with three schools, it sounds like, right now. And she also mentioned that, you know, the public school funding is under attack right now, so I don't know if anybody was able to attend the Stanley Herzog Foundation last week, but here's what the chairman Todd Graves had to say. "As I saved it for, and I think that Stan's legacy will go on as one of the greatest impacts on private schooling, Christian schooling, and culture, and the history of the country, and we are just getting started. You guys are here to support the St. Joseph Public School District. Thank you."
Hello, my name is Ava Dixon. I'm a proud junior who attends Central High School. I currently live at 2508 Meadow Trail, one of the parts of town that is being taken to Benton with the Plan 2BR. I came up here today not to argue or debate my point, but instead tell you the love I have for my school. I've been in St. Joseph's School District since I was five, and along the way, I've met some of the best people in the world, lifelong friends and some of the best teachers I could have asked for. For many, looking in the district looked bad, but I saw the good. I know some might disagree, but I was given amazing education in this school district that I am thankful for, especially in my school, Central. Central has given me more opportunities than I ever thought existed. I opened up while coming here, I joined amazing clubs and teams, and I've even been on student government. And most of all, I've been able to maintain a 4.3 GPA whilst tending this school. The amount of support and love I get at Central is above all. I and others have understanding teachers that are willing to give one-on-one time they deserve. Since I've been at Central, overall testing scores have increased and attendance rate. The school works so hard to get us to school every day, and it's showing. Other schools around St. Joseph's School District are doing the same, including Lafayette and Benton. But Central has became a family for me. Speaking tonight, I want you to think, how is it going to be fair next year? How will I and other students make such things as student government when they're completely new to a school with hundreds of more kids? At Central, we vote for student government at the end of the year. How will this be possible now? I would also like you to think about my next topic. Me and so many others work hard to achieve top 10% of our class. My last three years, I have sat at the top 8 and 9%, now that the idea merging schools and making them bigger is making my chance go down during my senior year. This is unfair, especially to those seeking college. Many people talk about the sports that will be affected, but what about myself and others' education of further high school plans? I will be taken away from all I know, which is my high school, Central. I am a student who is affected by Plan 4BR. Any way we go, which is unfortunate, I and many others are forced to attend different schools. I am not sure about the best option that will hands our own education, but I am up here asking you to please give us seniors, class of 2027, some grace. You can't strap us away from all we know. There has to be a way to have three schools and still have a good enough budget. Every school in St. Joe is its own family, and I feel for those losing it. My school might not be closing, but I am forced away. I hope you all tonight see my point of view and understand. This is a time to come together and help the students of St. Joseph. I am always, I am and always will be a Central Indian, and I hope that goes for everyone else, including Lafayette and Benton. Thank you for your time.
Lieutenant Colonel Dave Jones, Senior Army Instructor here at Central. My first message is to the board members. Have the courage to make the decision that you need to make. Be able to put your head on the pillow, knowing that you voted tonight with your conscience and get a good night's rest because you guys deserve it. My second message is to my Lafayette family. I cut my teeth at Lafayette five years. Bo Tillman, Jeff Leek, Derek Freeland, Freeland was my mentor. I dearly love my Lafayette family. If the board makes the decision to implement Plan 4BR, here's my promise to the Lafayette cadets. I will be there in the morning at the drill hall to hug those cadets, to cry with them, and to help them transition over here to Lafayette, because I will leave no cadet behind. I love you guys, love Lafayette. I bleed green, and we're going to take care of you no matter what happens. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chloe Paxton. I went to Betsy Elson and now I go to Eugene Field. Sometimes I think, why would you want to close the two schools? Those are the best schools. I love them so much. I'm in fifth grade, and I don't want to spend my last year in a school I don't know. I have a godmother at Betsy Elson who is the best godmother and also a great teacher. And in Eugene Field, I have the best teachers. I don't, I don't want to go to any other school. I sometimes need extra help in school, and the teachers at Eugene Field are always there for me. Please don't, please don't close these schools. I also have a brother that goes to Lafayette, and he is special needs. He loves that school. He doesn't act out as much as he used to. Please don't close Lafayette. That is why I recommend you to choose another plan.
Hello, I am Dixie Orchid, 16 years old, going to Lafayette High School. I'm a sophomore. To the esteemed members of the school board, facilities, students, and community members, I stand before you today with a sense of urgency and a heart full of concern for the future of Lafayette High School. As a proud member of this institution, I have witnessed firsthand the transformative power it holds, not only in shaping individual lives, but also in enriching the very fabric of our community. Lafayette High School is more than just bricks and mortars. It is a beacon of hope, a nurturing ground for dreams, and a cornerstone of our town's identity, closing its doors and making our beloved school a middle school. The impact of such a decision would ripple people throughout our community, affecting teachers' jobs, parents', and students' mental health. Therefore, please consider others' well-being and thoughts. I have been in Lafayette High School in St. Joseph, Missouri for going on four months. My first-ever big school. I love it. I look forward to going to school every day, greeting all the incredible staff. I have made a great friend group. Everyone is not happy from all schools. I am genuinely worried. Please take my thoughts into consideration and help these staff and students and their parents who care and want these schools to be here. Thank you. Have a great rest of your night.
My name is Angela, and that was my beautiful daughter, who's only 10 years old, that spoke from her heart tonight. And I'm going to speak from my heart for Lafayette. I have a freshman there, special needs, autistic, ADHD, and ODD. Since being a freshman there, his whole life has turned upside down and been doing wonderful. We're seeing better progress at home for him. We're seeing him have more friends there and speaking up for him more, and him standing up for himself more in things. He absolutely loves that school, and I know that deep down, if he got turned upside down, kids with special needs don't always like to be flip-flopped around. It causes trouble. It causes anger. It causes hurt. We need to think of the ways that we cannot turn these kids', all kids', lives upside down because it hurts them more, and then it hurts their families. So please, choose a different plan. Thank you.
My name is Cynthia Cook, and I live on Cronkite Road. I've spoken here several times. I attended both nights of the basketball jamboree. The support for Lafayette was incredible. Students, families, staff, alumni, everyone showed up. I saw shirts that said Lafayette versus everybody. It broke my heart. Whether you intended to do it or not, you have, that's exactly what these kids feel. And it's because nothing this board has done has made any of this easier. You've changed direction so many times that you've created chaos and stress for an entire district. You've pitted students against each other, and all of it could have been avoided with clear, consistent decision-making with complete facts and figures. Dr. McGinnis said, "If you can't make a decision, then just stop." And she is right, because the true high school plan is not close to being ready. Transportation is a mess. Longer routes will overlap, which means more buses and more drivers. While first student is already desperately trying to hire, you and they do not have the staffing to make that work. Facilities and activities will not magically stretch. How do you price the extra uniforms, equipments, and supplies that will be needed? Are the band and choir rooms big enough to take all the students who want those classes? Or are kids going to be turned away? You keep promising more opportunities, more sports, more clubs, more classes, but what happens when more students want in than there are space? Who loses out? The student who's already there, or the student forced to transfer because their school closed? Dance, cheer. Basketball teams cannot expand endlessly. Someone will lose their spot, and ignoring that is not honest. Pretending parents won't use other people's addresses to avoid moving their kids is just naive. It will happen. It happens now. The savings you're counting on disappear the second you look at the real cost. You cannot grandfather juniors at Central and Benton, but not Lafayette. That's not fair. Do not rescind the Plan E vote. It was the only plan that made sense before outside pressure started influencing your decisions. Stick with the plan that actually protects students instead of creating more chaos, because these kids are already telling you how they all feel. And if you keep ignoring them, the damage you're doing won't just be visible on T-shirts. It will be written across this entire community for years to come. A new building will not improve test scores and GPA. Good teachers, admin, family, and community support will. Scores are improving. Don't slow the progress being made.
Hi, my name is Karina Peters. I live at 5609 Canterbury Drive, and I am currently a junior at Central High School. I have attended Central for the past three years, and it has truly become my home. Although I am now in the district to attend Benton for my senior year, I am speaking today as a concerned student with hopes of making an impact. With the current boundary lines for Plan 4BR, myself and many of the other people I've spent my high school experience with will have to attend Benton as well. Fortunately, I'm given the privilege of being the daughter of an educator, and I can attend whichever school I may wish. My mother, Kim Peters, has worked in the district since 2007, nearly 20 years. She has tried her best to keep me educated on what the outcome of my senior year may be, because she knows a lot of my friends and peers I spent my childhood with will no longer be in the same school as me. The last three years of Central have shaped not only my education, but also my character. Central is a community and a family I've grown to love, just like all these other high schools. I've pictured my senior year since I was a child, and I've always pictured finishing where I started. I know many other students have too. I attended the school board meeting in Central's main gym on October 27th, the day you were originally making a decision on which plan was going to be implemented. I walked into the meeting rooting for Plan 2B because that was the only model at the time that allowed me to continue attending Central. During this meeting, you originally favored Plan E, but then recalled it. That was the moment I started to realize the escalation of the issue and that I had the possibility of being affected by the changes happening throughout the district. I understand you must make a decision that prioritizes the best overall recovery district funds, and that unfortunately means cutting the number to school in the district. I don't have any doubt that this decision is an urgent matter, but we matter too. Many students my age don't understand that Central students are affected very deeply as well. We are being overlooked by our peers. The truth is, we are being affected more than most people realize. Central's student body is made up of kids who live all around the city, not just in the north or just in the south. Many of us are being redistricted to a school we never planned on attending. The current junior class at Central High faces the possibility of finishing our high school journey apart from the classmates we've been with for years. The message I intend to propose tonight is simple. Please allow current juniors to finish high school where they are already enrolled, or give us the choice of where to complete our senior year. I am asking you to please take this idea into close and careful consideration. Please find a possible way to change this unfortunate situation into a growing opportunity for all of St. Joseph's School District. Thank you for hearing my story.
Hello, my name is Lucas Crispin. I'm being honest. It was a rough decision to come here tonight. My mom had to force me out of the house to come. I did not want to come. I feel like every time I've spoken, it has just gone in one ear and out the other of all the board members on here. I feel like I haven't been heard, and it's not just me. It's everybody from Lafayette and Benton and Central. We all have asked for you to keep all three schools open, and yet we have we have been denied each and every time. So here I am, asking one final time. Please keep all three schools open. Thank you.
Well, I guess this is starting to be a Monday night routine for me and my family out here. My name is Jess Crispin. I have five children, all in the school district, three which are at Lafayette, four of them which are here, and one of them that just spoke, so I hope he's okay. My oldest, that just walked out, is a junior this year and would like to finish his time at LHS with the friends he's made along the way. Why take that away from a 17-year-old boy? At the beginning of this year, I had three children at your district meeting. I had two of them, which were on the Lafayette color guard, and one which is on your choir. They didn't have to. It was still summer, but they chose to because they love their schools. Without Lafayette, none of that would have been possible. You talked about how it was going to be a great school year, and we did the whole, "I believe in St. Joe." What we didn't know was that you were talking about shutting the door on my children's future. You talk about the budget and money of the situation, but something that you're not concerning is the most priceless thing that Lafayette has to offer, and thus the many memories along the way. Lafayette is not just a school or a building, but also what has brought the children together and made them better citizens. Not only does shutting down Lafayette take away the friends they've made from the prior year, but also the memories they will develop as that alone will shape the person they are in the near future. Lafayette has brought a lot of spirit to my children's faces, from the dress-up days to jamboree or even the military ball. It's impacted the person they are today in some way. I have two other children, both of which are hoping to join Lafayette in the near future, just as their older siblings have. I'm not just a mom, but I'm also a past Lafayette graduate of the year 2006. And I remember on how awakened I was in the school spirit of the Fighting Irish. Although I am a mom of three kids at Lafayette, I hope to have a total of five to attend Lafayette because we are forever Irish.
Good evening. I am Doug Snyder. I teach at Rubidoo Middle School, right up in North End. I don't care to give my address, but I've lived at 4212 St. Joseph Avenue, room 203, for 13 years. And so I've distanced myself from speaking. And first and foremost, I want to say, first of all, I'm so happy to see so many of my former students from American history in these chairs right now. I'm also happy for Benton and Central students as well. You are here representing your school. Congratulations. But I click a lot of boxes. I can check them. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a teacher. And I have a lot of former students here. And I distance myself. I don't do social media, because that's the choice I make. But after watching a lot of disparaging comments the past few weeks, I'm here not only for my former students from Rubidoo Middle School, but I'm here for my daughter. And the decisions that are being made, and the decisions changing, you change like the weather in Missouri. Something needs to change, and it needs to change now. 4BR is not an optional. It's not an option. And as a former St. Joseph's School District Teacher of the Year, I will speak up. And I will say this right now. You already heard it from the advisor before. You need to get your affairs in order first. Delay 4BR now. My daughter will graduate with a diploma that says Lafayette High School on top. She will not have her high school career upended. This needs to be reevaluated. We need to look at it thoroughly. It is not pragmatic. And I decided when I came and I was going to speak, should I be calm? Should I be cool? And now that I've gotten up here, I can't help but be emotional, because that's what this board, this administration, has done to us. It's been weeks of frustration, bad sleep, bad, terrible news at school. 4BR needs to be delayed. We need to make a financial decision, and it needs to be done not now, but later. We're not in a position to make any decisions right now. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Natalie McMillan. I'm a sophomore at Lafayette High School. This problem has caused so much stress on not just me, but many others. But I'm here to speak for our targets program and kids. I've been at all the meetings, and you have not mentioned once what will happen with our targets program. Lafayette has the only targets program for all high schools in St. Joe. All the kids in this program feel at home at Lafayette, and we go out of our way to make sure they do. I've worked with them all year, and I've been watching them improve day by day. How would you feel at home... How would they feel at home if they can't walk the halls without stressing out? Us Lafayette students have been volunteering and helping them learn. I've watched all of their moods change for the past week, learning about what's going on. Take this into consideration when making your decision. Think of all the students. Also, think of our targets program and how they will be affected. Thank you.
My name is Sean Broome. Thank you to the board for allowing the opportunity to speak for everybody here. First, let's acknowledge the incredible difficulty of the decision. A school is so much more than a building. It's a place where our children grow, where families invest years of memories, where traditions take root, and where a sense of community is built day by day. The news of closing a school brings sadness, frustration, uncertainty, and in many cases, obviously, real grief. For the students who will be asked to leave a familiar place, for the families who have built friendships and routines around that school, and for the staff who pour their hearts into their work, this change is deeply emotional. It's important that we recognize that and honor those very real feelings. Let's all also express sincere appreciation to the members of our Board of Education. Decisions like this are incredibly complex, and they demand not only clear analysis, but genuine courage. Each of you serves because you care about our children and our community. Your passion, your dedication, and your willingness to step into difficult conversations do not go unnoticed. Thank you for your commitment, even when the choices before you are painful and the path forward is not easy. Thank you for leading with integrity, even in the face of difficult circumstances. Your work makes a difference. As hard as this moment is, it's also important to be honest about why we're here. Our district must get its financial house in order. Without strong and sustainable finances, we cannot provide the programs, support, and opportunities our students deserve today or in the future. We have a responsibility to make sure that resources are aligned to student needs, and that we aren't spreading ourselves too thin, and that every dollar is used in a way that strengthens the educational experience across the entire district. This isn't just about balancing a budget. It's about protecting the long-term health of our schools. It's about ensuring that future generations of students will have access to high-quality teachers, extracurricular activities, safe buildings, and the academic foundations they need and deserve. Making tough decisions now gives us the ability to build a stronger and more sustainable future. To the families and staff affected by the closure, your voices matter. Your feelings matter. And as a community, we need to walk this path together, supporting our staff and students through the transition, honoring the history of the school we may be losing, and focusing on what's possible moving forward. This is a challenging time, but the people of St. Joseph are resilient. If we stay focused on our students, remain honest about our challenges, and continue to work respectfully with one another, we can and will emerge from this stronger than before. Again, board, thank you.
Hello, my name is Owen Zai, and I'm a junior at Lafayette.
And that's your first warning? If it occurs again, you will be removed. I need you to be respectful.
We good?
I'm sorry, sir. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Owen Zai, and I'm a junior at Lafayette. You guys have totally forgot who you are here for, and that is us, the students. So many of us kids and parents have begged to figure out the better way. Smaller schools are better for students and teachers, but you all know that. A shiny new building is not going to bring new families to town, learning opportunities, and along with better test scores that you guys want. We will never be a stalyer liberty, as much as you guys try to be and just keep trying. Closing a school will affect our class ranks and the amount of scholarships me and other juniors in the district will be trying to obtain next year. I think those of you guys that were there at the jamborees this week, Thursday and Friday, saw how much school spirit all the schools in the school district have. If you close a school, so many kids will change schools and will be at a different one next year, and all of that will be gone as you know it. Last but not least, please do what is right for everyone. That is not closing a high school. First off, before I start speaking, I just want to point attention to the audience. Hold those signs up.
Excuse me, I'm going to interrupt you really quick. I'm going to interrupt you. Could you remove him? Could you remove him in the back, please?
Is my time paused?
It's paused. If you can remove him, please.
Because I've already asked you once, and you're being extremely disrespectful to this child right here. You're being disrespectful, Mr. Reader. I've asked you to be quiet, and you refused to, and so now I'm asking you to leave. I need you to remove him. Why are you still... I need you to remove him. Thank you.
Why is he coming in this media?
I'm sorry, Mr. Zai.
These are the people. I'm very proud that... I haven't been able to be in all the meetings, but these people have shown up every meeting, and they continue to fight, and I'm proud to see that. All the people that come and speak, these are the people that you are representing. All right, so I got to get started before I lose my time. My name is Connor Zai. I'm currently... I'm a 2023 Lafayette alumni. I'm currently a freshman basketball coach at Lafayette. I'm a junior at Missouri Western, majoring in secondary education and social science. My goal is, one day, to become a high school teacher and a head basketball coach. The North Side has been so good to me. I truly can say it made me the man I am today. So many great teachers and families have made such a difference in my life. Now that I'm coaching, I feel like I'm able to give back to the North Side, give back to the community that made such a difference in my life, hope those kids each and every day, not only as athletes, but as men. These past few weeks, I've had multiple kids come up to me. Is Lafayette really closing? And my heart hurts for those kids, because that's not what they should have to be worrying about during this time in their high school experience. Is my school going to close next year? Where am I going to have to go next year? Just because my school is closing, and you flip-flop from these decisions like they're just buildings, it's bigger than that. I respect the board and all the administrations, because one day, I'd like to be administration so I can fight for these people. I understand the task is difficult, but you have to listen to the loud majority. At some point, you have to listen to it. There's no one coming here supporting any of your plans. They're all coming here to support to keep all three. I believe this decision is essential to this future of St. Joe. My biggest fear is the enrollment. Every parent I've talked to, families, they're not... When this decision gets made, if you close one of their high schools, they are leaving this district. These are your customers. You will lose them. That is very concerning. That is... Should be our number-one goal, is to bring more families, not lose them. Not only destroying a high school, you're destroying communities. You flip-flop between Lafayette and Benton, setting us up against each other. That is not fair. That is totally wrong. I stand for the South Side just as much as the North Side. These are the strong communities in your... In St. Joe. The fact that you have ignored is the majority, the high majority. Keep all three. These elementary schools also that are on the chopping block, these are the best elementaries in this school district. These are the reason families, young families, bring their kids to this school. It starts in the elementary level. These are the families you are affecting. My recommendation is for you to listen to the loud majority. Keep all three. Students should never suffer due to financial mistakes. You don't come here and destroy communities and destroy them. You don't do that. That is plain wrong. Use this momentum from this public support. You got the majority. Let's roll with it. Let's use this majority to keep going. Keep all three.
I'm so proud of him. Well, my name is Michelle Zai, and I keep on changing my speech. I was wanting to be nice and plead, like I've done all the other times, but I feel like it doesn't do any good. So it's just facts, pretty much. Tonight, we heard we're not in a financial crisis. Our lack of financial stability was brought on by our own district's failure to apply for $9.6 million in federal funding, and it didn't budget in the raises, step increases, insurance, basic items any responsible organization would include. It is alarming that this is not visible to the board. This mismanagement forced payday loan. What's the interest cost to the taxpayers? The report also admits the $1 million ELA curriculum error, where a contract misinterpretation required an upfront payment instead of spreading it out over years. Again, not disclosing this properly. The district rushed to create new consolidation options. The latest was assembling in hours, with no evidence or verification, yet it proposes uprooting the entire district based on spreadsheet savings. Here are kids maybe be able to graduate in red or green next year, but who really cares about that? You're taking them away from their school. They're not going to be in their school. Where's the plan for the additional resource officers when the high schools hit max capacity? Just last week, an administrator was attacked at Central. Don't expect any less trouble with overcrowding. It wasn't publicized, but kids talk. Do I have to remind you that we are 80% free and reduced lunch? Our kids need more personal one-on-one interaction. You have to tailor to their demographics. We will never be staly or liberty until our test scores are better. Don't cater to the elite, powerful minority and take care of the families that really need the neighborhood schools. How can you make all these changes when it's shown tonight how fiscally irresponsible you are? Why do you have more administration in St. Joe than some of the schools that are larger and have more students in Kansas City? Do what's right for the students and keep all three.
My name is Warren Ingram. Once again, I'm that punk-ass kid from the South End. I just wanted to say that, from Benton, that's my family again. I spoke about that the last time I was here. Yeah, they're maybe my cousins, but they're still my family. And I would do anything for them. Includes saying that parents say, "You need to make better decisions as a whole." Right here, we got my second cousins, my Lafayette people. Some of you think, "Oh, well, you know, whatever." Yeah, Benton and Lafayette, I always looked forward to our football games, our basketball games, our band competitions. But they were still our family, and we cheered each other on all the time. Basically, along with what the last gentleman just said that was over here, that if you go through with these two plans you're talking about doing, or this one plan you're talking about doing, I've been seeing a lot on social media this week. There's people asking, "Where can I do homeschooling? Where can I find out information for homeschooling?" They're going to leave. They're tired. So just be ready. You all know that Plan E was the best choice. It was always the best choice. And I agree, and I understand that you have to swallow your pride sometimes and admit that somebody got a better plan than what we thought we had. You have to. It just comes with it. There's a young lady here that has a T-shirt that says Lafayette versus everyone. No, you got a lot of people on your side from the South End. And from Central, and from Central. But the biggest thing is, you need to keep all three high schools open. You know, I was always worried about how it was going to affect these kids. We hear these days about the depression that a lot of these kids are going through. And if you close one of these high schools, or repurpose it, however you want to word it, just think what's going to be going through their heads then. I wouldn't want to be in their place. I'd be depressed. I'm depressed now, because of what was going to happen to my high school. Basically, you're killing the souls of these schools. You're killing the soul of this school. It's North Side. It's Lafayette. And they should be proud of what they have. For the past 35 years, I've been lucky enough to be a part of the Benton High School football chain gang. You know, the guys that stand on the sidelines like this? I had a good friend of mine, a lifelong friend, a childhood friend I've known since I was about four years old. He was a Lafayette graduate, but he always came down, and he worked the Benton football games. He was a really good friend of mine. His name was Mike Veal. He was a proud Lafayette alumnus, very proud. I want to try to get through this real quick, but are you listening? There's people up here almost in tears. So with a real quick vote, all those who voted for Plan E, stand up.
My name is Chad O'Callahan. If I start coughing, I apologize. I've been sick for a week, but I decided to come here because this was more important than me laying in bed with a man cold. With that being said, all of you in the audience, look ahead of you. These are the people that failed you. These are your government. They failed all of you, repetitively. Multiple generations of these individuals up here have failed you. I can remember 10 years ago, when we talked about the Colgan incident. Some of us can't get past it. But I still voted for every tax increase, every single time, because I wanted smarter kids. I wanted a smarter community. But yet, here we are, again. I have a master's in research, and over the last month, most of the stuff that your auditor, non-auditor, I'm sorry, I don't remember her name, most of the stuff that she said, I already knew. But yet, you failed to acknowledge that. What is your job? To make things up by the seat of your pants? I work for a government agency. I understand how government works. But again, you and your predecessors are the ones that created this. Not them. Don't punish them because you have the inadequacy to do your job correctly. Regardless of whatever you decide tonight, which should be Plan E or nothing at all. If you decide to close one building, one single building, every single one of you better be at that school tomorrow to be there as a counselor, as a guidance, and to tell them you failed them. Some of you may call me a bully. I've learned from the best. You've bullied these kids for almost a year. I'm going to take your home from you. Thank God Santa Claus is coming pretty soon. I could stand here up and tell you, my last name's O'Callahan, I bleed Irish. My family come over here and fought. That is my Fighting Irish over there, because they don't lose. This is my Benton family, where half my family is from. Central is being affected. I want you to tell Central, half of you are leaving. Good luck, because that's what you're doing to them. You can't budget money, so we have to suffer, again. As was said earlier, we expect our admin to do better. That was from your auditor. That was from your auditor. That's what we expect. I don't know what else to say other than I'm ashamed of you. Two of you have very little time left. Don't hope to get reelected because it ain't going to happen. No offense, Ms. Lanning, I'm a huge fan. You put them to the test. I really wish some of them would answer the question when things come up. Some of you never get reelected again.
I'd appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Profit. I've been a proud parent at Eugene Field Elementary since 2015, when the youngest of my three children started kindergarten. The thought of Eugene Field closing is absolutely heartbreaking for me, but tonight I'm here with facts. Not emotions, not pity, not stories, just research, data, and the truth this district cannot ignore. Across the country, every major research institution, Brookings, NEPC, and the American Psychological Association agrees that closing or consolidating elementary schools is not good for children. Doing so creates two to three years of academic disruption, increased absenteeism, and higher stress. The National Education Policy Center states that school closures are de-stabilizing events with long-term negative effects, especially for elementary students. The Learning Policy Institute confirms that school connectedness is one of the strongest predictors of student success and mental health. When you close an elementary school, you don't simply move kids. You remove the very foundation that research says protects them most. Now let's talk about the plan in front of you. Rubidoo opens immediately over capacity, over 560 elementary students. The National Center for Education Statistics is clear, overcrowded schools experience lower achievement, higher discipline incidents, and increased teacher turnover. Why would we knowingly choose a model proven to lower student outcomes? Rubidoo does not have the land for a safe playground. Federal safety guidelines recommend 75 square foot of space per child using the playground at one time. A 560-student elementary school cannot be safely supported on that site. Safety matters. This alone should leave the option cold. Playground costs are underestimated. National averages range 250 to 500,000, not 150,000. This plan does not save money. It multiplies costs. That is a small line item in what we will need, what will need to be done to Rubidoo before it could function as a safe elementary school. Eugene Field has a brand-new HVAC system. Taxpayers invested in that building for the next 20-plus years. Closing Eugene Field now is not fiscal responsibility. It's fiscal waste. Capacity inequity across the district would be undeniable. South Side schools will sit below optimal capacity. North Side schools will sit full or overcrowded. This plan creates that imbalance. You have choices, better choices, choices that do not uproot thriving, high-performing elementary schools, choices that do not create immediate overcrowding, that do not waste taxpayer investment, and choices that do not jeopardize playground safety. You are not boxed in. You are not out of options. You simply need to choose smarter, safer, research-aligned options. So tonight, before you cast a vote that will echo for decades, you hear this. The research is against this plan. The safety standards are against this plan. The capacity numbers are against this plan, and the entire Eugene Field and Pershing community united is against this plan.
I'm Jason Ingram, number 27, and you have my address. All the speakers come up every night that we do public forums or at meetings at the Traister Media Center, and they give their opinion on what's going on. Everybody gives their own angle of how to convince you what they want. I'm going to try to get down to the most basic reason why we're here and why we have elected officials. We have elected officials to represent us in our, what we want as a community or as an individual. The elected official listens to us, takes that back to the board, and they vote on it. Everybody has a vote. You have a vote. All these people have a vote. You take those votes, the unanimous vote, to the administration, and the administration makes it happen. Am I wrong? So at the last public meeting here in the gym, I gave you the score, and the score was that Plan E overwhelmingly is what the community wanted. So the community has brought their decision to the board, who is a representative, and you take that to the administration. They've, they've told you time and time again that Plan E is what they want. It's what we want. Right or wrong, whether it works or not, that's what we want. So that's what you're going to do because we're telling you that's what you're going to do. Because we elected you to do that. And so the board, I don't think you have a question about it. We've told you time and time again what we want. Take it to the administration, and the administration makes it work. That's all I have to say.
Travis Smith, proud North Side resident. And I'm really proud that you guys brought the lady in here today because it really turned my speech from a citizen here talking to community member worried. Now I'm a, I am a hurt, very hurt father of two boys to learn that my kids are going to pay the price in your vote for somebody else's mistake. How is that even acceptable? It's not. And as the other gentleman just said, there's two seats getting ready to come up here in April. Do you want some help trimming out that dead weight there that needs to go? Because let me tell you what, I'll be up on that board. And if you're going to try to justify somebody that's failing to do their job to come at a cost of all these kids, you guys better ring the bell because it's on. We're not going to stand for it. We're taking this town back. Somebody's got to get some control, but it's going to have to start with getting the correct order of procedure done to do this, which you've already been told it hasn't been done. Plan E is the best plan to keep these schools going and keep the community support, which is what you got to have. A demographer already did a study in 2019. None of any of the advice that was given was followed. One of the things that bothered him was the overcrowding of schools. So now we're sitting here talking about overcrowding three. None of this is adding up, guys. Let's go back to the board and get it right going forward. There's no reason we can't do it, but when you make that decision to destroy this town and this community, you're all gone. I'd advise you guys to leave. I don't know how you'd even be able to show your face anywhere around here. I, in fact, I'd get, I'd get way away because you should be ashamed of yourselves. You do have the ability to do this, and you have the ability to keep the community involvement, which is what it takes. If any plan you go forward with, you lose the community, it's done. It will never evolve to anything. Do the right thing. Put Plan E on there. You obviously weren't going to do the best financial decision, which was Plan Two. We take Plan Four BR that never even added up to the money savings and did more detrimental harm to the community. Doesn't make sense. Get it right. Leave the three schools before this gets even more personal than it has for me.
Deanne Woodbury. I am a North Sider. I do not currently reside in the North Side due to decades of targeted boundary changes between housing developers and administration. So I do live on the East Side, but this is an informative statement. We, as a community, have stood before you for weeks. Many parents, students, and staff in tears over this. You haven't listened, so we have taken action. In brief, a group named Save Our Schools Coalition has contacted numerous advocates that include the ACLU, Democracy Now!, Missouri Ethics Commission, Missouri State Auditor's Office, Missouri Attorney General's Office Sunshine Complaint Department, DESE, Special Ed Division of DESE, St. Joe Post, KSHB, KCTV-5, with the following. We are writing on behalf of deeply concerned residents of St. Joseph, Missouri to urgently request your intervention. Our school district is facing a crisis of governance, equity, and fiscal accountability. These decisions are not reshaping, are not only reshaping our educational system, they are doing so recklessly without proper oversight, transparency, or regard for student safety. St. Joseph is a proud community of approximately 70,834 residents in 2025, reflecting a slight decline of 0.37% since the last census. Our neighborhood schools are the heart of our identity and future, yet in just a matter of days, the Board of Education is preparing to make irreversible decisions that will disrupt thousands of families. The main four points of our plea for help are socio-economic gerrymandering, financial mismanagement, disregard for public input, transparency and legal violations, and the details are included in the actual letter that was sent. We are fully prepared to contact more advocates. Our community deserves decisions based on fairness, fiscal responsibility, and the best interests of all students, not special interests. I will end with this, with as a snip of an email that was sent to you, but since admittedly some of you do not open those, I just thought everybody would like to hear this. It was written by Carrie Kelzer. She is at the girls Lafayette basketball game. We couldn't be here. Your role is not to rubber stamp district proposals, but to represent taxpayers and students and hold the administration accountable.
My name is Kaylee Smith, and I am here to advocate for Eugene Field Elementary, the school that scored 100% on the APR, the school that has the highest attendance rate in the district, and the school with a brand-new HVAC system less than six months old. Tonight, I want to focus on one simple factual statement. If the goal is staffing efficiency, then consolidating two fully-staffed, high-performing elementary schools into a secondary building that will house the largest elementary population in the district is the least efficient model possible. Here is what the consolidated building is projected to need compared directly to what Field and Pershing already have. Administrators: projected two. We already have two. Teachers: projected 34. We already have 35. Librarians: projected one. We currently have two. Full-time subs: projected one. We have zero now, so that's an added position. Counselors: projected two. We already have two. Nurses: projected two. We already have two. Nutrition: projected five. We currently have six. Custodians: projected four. We currently have five. Admin assistants: projected two. We already have two. Those numbers speak for themselves. Not one core student-facing position is eliminated, several support roles are reduced, and new positions are added. This is not staffing efficiency. It is an increase in need paired with a decrease in support, and we haven't even addressed the obvious. The consolidated school will immediately become the largest elementary school in the district, placed inside a building not designed for young children, which increases supervision needs, safety coverage, transition support, cafeteria and recess monitoring, and nurse and counselor workload. The administration projected 150,000 to convert Rubidoo into an elementary school. So we can retrofit bathrooms used by middle schoolers to fit kindergarteners, install playgrounds for nearly 570 students, install all safety protocol for young children, and bus all the kids who currently walk to their neighborhood school, all for $150,000. Cost savings from utilities will not be realized unless you sell the facilities, and we don't know when or if that will happen. Please keep Field and Pershing open. Let us continue to lift up the district with our test scores. Let us help you avoid losing accreditation.
My name is Jeff Leek. I tried to step away from this fight. Tried to step away thinking, hey, maybe, maybe certain things can't be done. But when I noticed that the plans evolved and the numbers and, and problems that were a big deal, like my plan going a half dozen over in a school here or there was a, was a trump card, and then we're over, just that was over optimum capacity, and then we go over maximum capacity, others, it just made me think this. If we would have put the effort into a three-school plan, and it doesn't have to be Plan E, it's just a three-school plan. If we would put the effort into that, that we put into trying to discredit it, and that we've put in to try to make all these other plans work by add, there's more rooms at Benton now, according to the DLR study. There's this, there's that. We went out of our way to make some of these happen. A three-school option is what this community has, has spoken up for. Why can we not embrace the love for our schools? The, the Staley's and the Park Hills would love to have this much enthusiasm about their schools down there. This is something that is unique to our community, and I, I just think we should embrace it. We can make improvements. If we upset and we go against our population, how are we going to pass a levy? How are we going to pass a bond? That to me, we should all be rising together. You know, I, I've been to a lot of board meetings. I've never seen an issue that has this much negative impact on so many people. And I just don't understand, you know, in politics, they used to say one handwritten letter was worth 50 phone calls. And I know you get emails and calls, but there are far more people showing up. It takes a lot to come out here and spend five or six hours of our night like you guys of yours. It's much easier to send an email. So there is, this is not the loud minority. This is the majority of people in town. And with what happens here, Dr. Hedgecore said the cuts would be deep, but the cuts of closing schools are deeper. I'm looking at our numbers. We're $25 million more in staffing than we were five years ago. It looks that we're somewhere around 200 additional staff than we were five years ago. If we just cut 10%, and I know that's hard to hear, but there, there's some things that we could trim some fat. 10% of that would, would give us more savings than any plan that's been presented. And I think that closing a school should be the absolute last thing that we do because our students, my children, you know, my son needed that extra counselor, needed people to see him. And I'm not saying that it can't be done in a big school. It's just harder. It's just harder. Smaller schools are an advantage that we got to embrace.
Hello. My name is Raven Millardrag. And just standing in this line today, I have heard 1,000 reasons why we should keep one school, keep the other, or keep all three. I could go off a list of 100 things of just that affect me personally as a student at one of these schools, but I want to focus on two things. One, our trust between the community and the school board and the academic success of our students. Our trust between, the trust between the community and the school board has been compromised multiple times. We need you to make a decision. Stick to your words. Quit going back on what you say. It is causing the community so much more stress than what is needed. Take the two plans you have today and make a vote. I don't care which one, but pick one. Listen to the community. They want three schools. Vote. Make a decision tonight. But I also want you to think about the academic success of our students. If you close one of our smaller schools and force them into a bigger school, they will not be as academically successful. This was proven multiple times, and one of the things that most proves this is our six-way tie for Val Victoria in the sophomore class at Benton High School. If any of those kids are moved to Central or even any bigger school, they would have almost no chance at reaching that level of success there. You are compromising students' success for their lack of opportunities now. Closing our small schools hurts our students. So when you make this decision, think of our students, not our money. Thank you.
I'm Olivia. I'm in kindergarten, and I really like Eugene Field because it's, the teachers are really nice and like Ms. Safley is really nice too. And I've, don't close Eugene Field because it's the best school ever. I like it a lot.
Hi, my, hi, my name is Addison Smith. I'm in second grade and I'm eight. Eugene Field is a wonderful place to be and safe. I think it's really fun to be there and have fun with friends. It's a wonderful place to be. Don't shut down Eugene Field.
Good evening. My name is Stormy Millardrag. Can you hear me? Oh, my God. I'm too short for this. Thank you. All right, now it's me, hi. All right. Good evening. My name is Stormy Millardrag, and I am a sophomore at Benton High School. Before I start, I want to emphasize, I am advocating that we keep all three schools. This community needs Plan E. We are a united community, and this is creating a divide. Last time I spoke to you on money and test scores and bus costs, while these are all still important, today I want you to think big. Let's think about the future of this district. Not as an independent school, but as a district with a long-term goal. We need sustainability and we need unity. I want you to imagine something. It's next school year and it's a Board of Education meeting. What's the topic? What school should we repurpose to save the district money? This is where we are heading if we do not make a decision. I know this is hard, and I know there is no way to please everyone. So, we need to think big and long-term. This is why we need all three. Keeping Benton and Lafayette as a high school creates a foundation for the Board of Education's long-term plan. Two high schools, one in the north and one in the south. That was your goal when we started. It will be there for our community to keep, it will be better for our community to keep all three schools until we can get there. I'm asking the school board tonight that we think about the future of our district. What will be best for us five years from now? The answer is Plan E. This is possible. Yes, we are in a financial struggle, but we are not in a crisis yet. This was stated by your financial experts tonight. We can still pull ourselves out of this hole with Plan E and protect ourselves down the line. Goals require actions and sometimes even a leap of faith. And this choice will either make or break our community. Let's finish this as a community, not as schools divided. Finally, I ask the board to please stop playing with people. Let's make a choice, no matter how hard it is. People deserve stability now, and they deserve to not be back here next year. Now, I don't envy your position, and I know it is not easy. I don't believe I could do any better. It's hard. Every time you think you've made the right choice, another group of students comes in and turns your decision. Today, we need to put our footstool. Today is the day we have to make that hard choice. And I ask you not to just look at every student in this room, but think about every student in your district. We can make Plan E work because we are St. Joseph together. Thank you for your time.
Alexandria?
Yeah.
Hello again to everyone here tonight, and thank you all for coming. My name is Alexandra Pinland, and I am a sophomore at Benton High School. Just to preface my speech, I am not advocating for Lafayette to close. Keeping all three high schools is best-case scenario and what everybody wants. But I am here specifically to advocate for Benton. In my last speech at the previous board meeting, I spoke of how we should value equal opportunity in academics and extracurriculars because they go hand-in-hand. It is important for students to have geographically equal access to extracurriculars. And while that would be threatened with any two-high school model, Benton is the one with less radical change. There would be one north school and one south school, which is what the long-term plan talks about. So, every student in the district would have a more distributed amount of distance that they would have to travel to get to school. This allows for a fairer, more equal opportunity for students to be successful because Benton is a successful school in many ways, and we want to preserve that, and so was Lafayette. Many extracurriculars require kids to come in early, and stacking extra three miles just to get to school is completely unfair to those students in the south side that want to be successful and get into good colleges. And that's just for extracurriculars. People from Benton also talked about in the last meeting about how we should, about how those that are most successful in Benton would not amount to those that are most successful in Central because Central is objectively our larger school. So, me and those like me would automatically drop down the academic ranking simply because we went to a smaller school and there would be nothing we could do about it. Not only do we want kids to have an equal chance of success, we want our district to prosper, which would be more challenging with Lafayette. But again, I'm advocating for all three schools. But here, I am just putting the two models and comparing them. But again, I want all three schools. But saving more upfront does not necessarily make it the best solution if it causes us more problems down the line, like being landlocked. It is no use simply saving more money if we were going to use that money through buying out houses and lawsuits that not only cost our district money but time that we could put to better use. The guest earlier spoke that spoke said herself that we are not in a financial crisis and therefore have the room to be making long-term decisions that will benefit, that will benefit those who come after us. Again, I spoke about this previously, but it is important that we consider the future of our district into the here and now. In the scenario of a two-school model, it is more fiscally responsible to renovate one school and build one new one rather than to build two new ones. In the situation that we are in now, I ask the board to please make a financial responsible decision because that is the reason that we are here in the first place. Ms. Williams, a few weeks ago, you asked to see red, green, and blue when it came to the time of the vote. As you can see, we are all here, so please make the decision and stick to it. If you are going to drag our community through worry, uncertainty, and fear, then we should, at the very least, have some good come out of it. I thank all of you for your time.
Kim Dragoo, I think you all know who I am. To the members of the St. Joseph School District and Board, we, the People Three Schools Group, have retained an attorney in relations to the Board's ongoing consideration of high school consolidation proposals, including any potential transitions to a two-high school model. We, the People, are prepared to pursue immediate legal action should the Board take final action approving consolidation. Absent an immediate halt to improve efforts, to approve efforts, I am prepared to initiate a multi-count action against the district and the Board. Accordingly, the district is instructed to take all necessary measures to preserve all records and data, including but not limited to emails, text message, chats, drafts, notes, board materials, consultant, communications, financial analysis, planning documents, and any other information relevant to the consolidation, planning, and decision-making. Preservation applies to all Board members, district administrators, employees, and agents. Any destruction, alterations, or loss of relevant material may consult in spoliation and could result in sanction. We prefer, we prefer to avoid unnecessary conflict and remain hopeful that litigation will not be required. That outcome, however, depends entirely what the Board decides tonight. Sincerely, we, the People. My second point. We spent tens of thousands of dollars on demographic studies. You brushed them under the rug because it doesn't fit your narrative. We have asked for a demographer to come in and analyze our city. That fell on deaf ears. You're going, you reflect back to a six-year-old study. This is what the study concluded. I'm not going to read the whole thing because I don't have the time, but you can go to We the People Three Schools, and it'll be posted again tonight. Yeah, well, maybe you are. We do not recommend the construction of a new high school based on long-range enrollment projections showing a decrease in student numbers and a slight overcrowding that is occurring now based on our calculations. Preston Smith. Preston Smith. My third point. If anybody in this audience is not registered to vote, I can register you tonight. I have plenty. Meet with me, we'll get you registered. We gotta change things. Thank you.
And that's our last. Audience member, if we can take a quick break, and I do mean really quick, Board. Five minutes, and let's get back and let's do this. Okay, if everybody could come back to their seats, we can get started. Okay, on the agenda, if you can remove 2B, it's going to be moved to next month. Otherwise, is there an approval?
I have a question. Is 5C also getting moved?
5C? No. No, we're gonna vote on that one.
Mine that says Coleman Elementary Incline Chairlift on December work session. Why does it say that? In December?
In November.
Well, this says December.
In November, it was on the work session.
This is the kind of stuff. This is the kind of stuff.
Okay, is there an approval? Everyone, don't speak at once. Approval of the agenda. I have an approval in a second. If you can call the vote, please.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Miller? Ms. Chesney? Ms. Kearns? Ms. Lanning? Mr. Moore? Mr. Richmond?
And the agenda is all approved? Okay, number five, the consent agenda. I have a motion, is there a second? I have a motion in a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller? Ms. Chesney? Ms. Kearns? Ms. Lanning? Mr. Moore? Mr. Richmond?
And the motion passes, all approved? Okay, to you, Dr. McGuinness. Okay. Stacia Studer?
Good evening. I first want to start out by sharing some great news. We're thrilled to announce that our district proudly holds statewide honors with the Missouri Council of Teachers of Mathematics. We have the outstanding mathematics elementary educator and the outstanding mathematics high school educator. A special congratulations to Danielle Gonzalez, who teaches Algebra II over here at Central, and Christina Thomas, a fifth-grade instructor at Bessie Ellison. They will be celebrated for their exceptional work at the Missouri Council of Teachers of Mathematics Conference in Columbia on December 6. I want to share that their excellence highlights the high-quality math instruction that's taking place in our district. Board members, I provided with you the APR with highlighted positive moves on the, really on the growth metric on the APR. Also, what you'll find in my report is looking at the St. Joseph School District in regards to other districts across the state and where we align according to our APR. Understand that the 2022 was a pilot in 2023. You will see where 20 districts across the state compared to ours, and then 24 and 25. What I want to highlight for you is the growth. I want to highlight that the St. Joseph School District achieved 11.5% in increase in academic student outcomes. And I'm proud of, again, the work that our educators and our building leaders do every single day. The only district that outshined us was Columbia Public Schools and with 18.6% growth for 23 through 25 years. On the back of that sheet where it's outlined, the districts across the state, you will you will also find the APR scores from 2023 to 2025 by school in the St. Joseph's School District. Again, I want to highlight the growth that you will see across our sites. As you look down at that, exceptional work by our educators in the classrooms and the leadership at buildings, ensuring that high-quality instruction happens in our classrooms. Are there any questions on those two reports?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna share academic service important dates, so you'll see November 26th to 28th, no school Thanksgiving break. December 5th, teacher evaluation, classroom observation three. You will see that we would conclude December with our internal monitoring, our progress monitoring of instruction. You can't wait until you get this data. You want to ensure that we set up measures that high-quality instruction continues to happen. And then if not, what supports can we bring to those classrooms where we see that we might need to bring support to? And so you'll see that listed in the I-Ready Diagnostic with Literacy Task and the Predictive Assessments, and you'll see those windows. The last day for the, end of the quarter two is December 19th, which will conclude our first semester. And then we'll be on holiday break from December 22nd to January 2nd, with January 5th being a professional learning day, a half-day of professional learning day, and a workday for our teachers. And then we'll open up on January 6th. So, any questions about that? Thank you.
Thank you, Stacia. Okay, Dr. Hedgecorth?
Thank you, Ms. Williams. For the agenda item we have in front of you is the approval of bills for the month of November. You'll see many bills in this batch that has to do with our bond and that also is in the next agenda item that also has that bond tracking sheet as well. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions about this agenda item related to our bills for month of November.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion? If there are none?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller? Ms. Chesney? Ms. Kearns? Ms. Lanning? Mr. Moore? Mr. Richmond?
And the motion passes, all approved?
All right, so October financials that we have for this month, I wanted to go a little more detail than I normally do with the presentation from Ms. Linda Quinley. She talked a lot about seeing how you're tracking the year and knowing how your expenditures are. So, on the very front page, we have our operating funds, which is Fund 1, and then Fund 5 and 6 is actually sub-fund of Fund 1, and then Fund 2. Those are operating funds of what our operating fund balance ratio was based off of that we talk a lot about here today. And so you'll see there's an additional column that's been added called 2-Year Historical Percent Realized. So what that does is we went back for the last two years and we looked at our certified salaries, non-certified salaries, benefits, purchased services, supplies, materials, and looked at what the typical spend was for that point of the year for that object in the budget. And so you can see, for example, like with the first column, you can see that typically about 25.2% of the budget was spent in certified salaries for the past two years, we're at 25.6. So Ms. Quinley talked about having narrow accuracy and being within .5% by the end of the year. We're not there yet, but you can see at this point in the year, we are already below .5% of that variance. So, as you go through, I'll just kind of give some detail here. So you can see that certified salaries is about 1.3% above. And so some of that is early in the year, you have a lot more work that's done to prepare for school and get ready for that. So typically, you have more overtime that's paid out early in the year, and then as the year goes on, there's not as much. So you do see a little bit elevated percent paid out there. Employee benefits, you can see within .5%. And then on purchase services, you can see that we're .1% away. On supplies and materials, this year was a unique year where we bought a lot of materials upfront right at that August, September time period when school started. And so you do have an accelerated spend, but however, everybody has their budget numbers, everybody knows what those are. So as those start approaching, they know that purchase orders or other things would not be approved if they went over budget. So even though that is showing accelerated, as the year goes on, they know if their budget spent, there aren't any more dollars in that budget that they wouldn't have that availability. On the revenue side, so if you see something on the left-hand side that's a larger percentage than the right-hand side, then that means that revenue is a little bit behind, so it's opposite when you look at revenues. And so local, our local revenue right now is all delinquent taxes. So actually being below that means that there aren't as many delinquent taxes, which is actually good. We receive most of our local payments in December, January, and February, so you will start to see that really accelerate. Our county, that's railroad and utilities, we don't get that until March, so you're gonna see that at 0% till March comes. That's just the time of year where that payment comes for county. For state, that is paid every single month, so you can see we're a little bit ahead of what our projections were for state payment. And then on federal payment, you can see that we're about 19% ahead on that. That's obviously because of the two previous fiscal years. For title funding, we were able to get in July and October. And so that's why you see that above normal percentages. So, wanted to just talk about that, you know, point out that added column, so that will help the board ask any questions and then be able to compare and see how we're tracking for each month. So just wanted to point that piece out. Any questions on the financials for October? Yes, sir?
On the historical, there we go.
On the historical versus realized, the new column that you've added. You know, last year, it turned out that our budget was not correct. And so are we comparing this to an incorrect budget from last year?
You're comparing to actuals. And so that 2-year history compares of what was actually spent at this point of the month versus the year. And so at this time of the month, like if you look at certified salaries, we had spent 25.2% of what we actually spent at the end. So it's not based on any of the incorrect budget numbers from years past, it's based on actuals, it's on our ASBR. I also want to point out that these budget numbers are your October budget amendment numbers, so they are not your June that you started the year with. They are the October budget amendment numbers that we approved last month.
Are there any other questions? All right, if there are none, I'll take a motion for approval. I have a motion, is there a second? I have a motion in a second, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller? Ms. Chesney? Ms. Kearns? Ms. Lanning? Mr. Moore? Mr. Richmond?
And the motion passes, all approved?
So I do have one question before we move on to personnel. So Linda talked about having a goal for where we need to be with our fund balance percentage. What, what are we doing with that? Are we gonna do that here through a work session? Or are we gonna do that through the finance committee? I mean, I would really like to see some use of those committees. I mean, we've, we set them up, we appointed them, but it doesn't seem like we're using them in a way that they do work and then provide us with guidance based on, you know, digging in a little bit deeper than we normally do. So I guess that would, that's my question, but that's, I guess, also my recommendation.
No, I would recommend doing that through the finance committee. And then, of course, the board has an invitation to be at that finance committee and talk through. I can let you know, Linda said every district's unique, and she's right. There's a different mixture of local funding, federal funding, and state, and how that works. For us to not need a 10-note going further and further fiscal years, we need about 14% to 15% in our reserve ratio. So that would be a minimum that we would need to not have to, you know, in my opinion, you know, waste dollars to have to, you know, get that loan and then pay two months of interest back in January when we get our local tax benefit. So that would be the floor if I were to give an opinion.
So that would be my, my goal, or my hope, is that we can have that group doing something, if Dr. Hedgecorth is saying we want to be at 15% or 16%. And honestly, not to, you know, jump too far ahead in the agenda, but I do think that has been a misstep here, is that we are looking at plans to positively impact our budget and our financials, but we haven't clearly articulated what that goal is. And we also haven't clearly articulated what are we willing to give up? What are we willing to look at in order for that to happen? I do think that we've done this backwards of comparative to how we did the budget. You know, I really liked how Dr. Hedgecorth, when you talked about how we revised this year's budget and we started with non-academic services as far away from the classroom as possible so that you can, you know, you don't have to get there if you don't have to get there. But I think we did it the opposite way with these consolidation plans, is that we're talking almost solely about schools and we haven't talked about what's the percentage we're trying to get to. And I think even, even for me, when we've talked about your budget projection, we've always been looking at 20%. It's always been 20%. So then obviously, I think it causes confusion when your all's recommendation was that seven, whatever number it was, because then it's like, well, I thought we were trying to get to 20% through the consolidation. So I don't, I don't know what's gonna happen tonight. I know I'm only one vote, and I know I'm a vote. But I do think we need to do some really strategic and specific planning around where we are trying to get and what we are willing to do to try to get there. And I don't, we haven't done that.
I appreciate that, Ms. Lanning, any comments on that? Or would you rather wait until we get down in the action items? I mean, I've got some comments, but I'll keep that until the action item. If everyone's okay with moving on to personnel right now? Okay, Mr. Carroll?
Personnel and supplemental reports have been submitted for your review. I will have you take note that there is one certified staff member who began employment on November 4th, but that is within the 30-day timeframe for approval. If you don't have any questions, I ask for a motion for approval.
Mike? And there's a second, any discussion or questions? If there are none, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller? Ms. Chesney? Ms. Kearns? Ms. Lanning? Mr. Moore? Yes. Mr. Richmond?
And the motion passes, all approved? Okay, action item 8A, a potential rescind of Plan E. And as usual, I'll give everybody a moment, you know, to talk and everything like that. I normally go last, but this time I'm gonna go first, if everyone's okay with that. I want everybody to know that I appreciate all of your time, all of these meetings and everything, it's a lot. I know that it is. It's good, you know, to look out in the audience and look at the kids. I want you to know that I have looked at every single email, I've looked at a few of them a few times, more than once. Even if there's not a response, it's been read. I also want you to know, I also have a child in these schools. I run an organization and I have over 100 kids in 11 schools. A lot of my kids are, a lot of our kids have extreme needs, and I understand that. If you notice, I also have a disability, and so I understand about the needs in these schools. And I've given this lots of thought. I've been listening, and a lot of individuals are mentioning about the stress and about the lack of sleep and... And I also want you to know, I understand all of that too, all too well. And a month ago, I made a decision, and I stand by that decision. And I am asking our board to not rescind Plan E. I'm not gonna speak a long time. And there's lots of reasons around that, okay, but over the past month, I've never changed my mind. A few minutes ago, a few minutes, excuse me, a few meetings ago, after I knew that there wasn't the votes to keep it, I was looking at the plans, and I'm like, okay, so now I need to choose a plan. Well, I do not agree with choosing the better of two plans that I do not agree with. And the thing about it is, I'm only one vote, and I understand that, and whatever all of us choose, I will also promote that, you know, but I needed to let everybody know as I felt. And I also want everybody knowing, even if it was an empty audience, all these words would have been the same. I know that it's been mentioned, if like a large crowd comes, it will affect minds, and the thing about it is, it affects emotions, you know, but it has not changed all of the information and the facts. And a majority of the individuals in the room were in the room as we listened to Ms. Linda about all these issues, and we need to get everything in order prior to making all of these changes. And so, as I said, I'm only one vote. Only I know that I'm just asking our board, and I'm asking our admin. And I understand everything about the numbers, I have a lot. If you notice in the meetings, I don't really look at a lot of information, I don't even use a computer, it's memorized. I spend lots, lots of time looking at the information, and so I understand. I understand everything about the gravity of what I'm choosing this evening. I just, it's not our time. Who would like to speak next?
So, here's my thing with this, is that from the beginning, I have advocated, let's get a facilities committee on board to make this decision. And we decided not yet. We went through Plan 2 and Plan 7, and I had great concerns on it, great concerns, and we went to the meeting. And then we went with Plan E. So, I like to readdress a few questions before we do this. I want to redress a few questions here, because I feel like people need to know my big concerns on them. Stacia, we talked about the academics at the high schools. We're going to close borders at the high schools. What happens to those classes?
I'll say again, Plan E would spread our resources across three sites, increasing challenges in maintaining certain courses, program quality, and high-quality staffing. Understand that under the current model, open enrollment allows students who desire and have the means to attend Central for the academic offerings. So we've constant, there's, there's a larger student body of population here, and so because of that, we have more staffing, that we could provide more advanced coursework, more dual-credit, ones that are taught by our teachers who hold a master's in their specialized content. And if I am a, open enrollment works both ways, right? And I said that before. Open enrollment means, you know, if I want to go to Benton or Lafayette to play sports, I can go to play sports there. But it, it works here too for academics. That open enrollment piece means if I'm a parent, I know there are academic offerings here at Central, I can, I can provide that for my child, if I have the means.
So then I'll move on from that. So I will, I'm gonna be totally honest, so Plan E, I am not... So Plan E, I am not willing to put the academics on a back burner just because we need to right-size it. I will not. No, no student deserves that. So for that reason, Plan E as it is right now, I cannot support. I cannot support because academics is number one for me. Now, by the time we got comfortable with this, I think we'd be status quo and honestly, I would be fine with status quo. I would. And I said, let's pause, let's get a professional in here. And everybody said, no. The majority did not wanna go with it. So I'm gonna ask again, what was asked of me back then? What are we doing here?
I'd like to make a motion. After reviewing the data regarding academics, staffing and financials, I move to rescind the motion of October 27th, which adopted Plan E as the board's course of action.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? I have a question. If we're going to pull back Plan E, are you guys open to keeping everything as it is until the district is properly prepared in order to move forward?
Madam President, I, I am not. We, you know, we talk a lot about the effects of closing a building and I, and I understand Blame who you want, the fact is, you heard it tonight, we're not in financial crisis now, but we're heading there. And so primarily because of drop in enrollment all across the district and the related funding and spreading our teachers and our staffing, creating recruiting and retention issues, I personally don't think we can afford status quo any longer.
I can respect that.
And I guess, so I'm not gonna rescind my vote because I made a choice that night. I mean, if you'll recall on October, several times leading up to the October 27th meeting, I said, I feel like we're not ready to vote. I feel like we don't have all the information. That evening, I tried to move it to an informational item because I didn't think we had the information necessary to make a decision. But we voted 7-0 to adopt that plan. It was not my first choice. The long-range plan was my first choice. What I'm concerned about here is kind of what you're, what you're saying, Latonya, is I think for some people, Plan E and the status quo are the same thing. The reason why I was supportive of Plan E on the 27th is because if we weren't ready to follow those two other plans, which I did not support for a variety of reasons, and wanted to perfect, which I thought we had started doing and then we didn't, it at least did something, right? Like it, it didn't do everything envisioned forward, but as I've said for probably three years now, the issues that we have in this district are not just with our high schools, it's with our feeder patterns, it's with a lot of different things. The middle school model, six, seven, eight, seven, eight. So I guess my concern is, and you know, you all kinda know how you're gonna vote, I'm just, I, what I don't wanna see happen now is that we abandon Plan E and then don't have the gumption to move forward and then we're, we just do nothing. So, so I guess that is, that is my concern. But I'll support whatever happens. I'm just not gonna take back a vote that I made publicly and a decision that I made.
Could you repeat your motion? Mike, please.
Certainly. After reviewing the data regarding academics, staffing and financials, I move to rescind the motion of October 27th, which adopted Plan E as the board's course of action.
Do you have that written down?
And Rhonda, second in. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Okay, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Chesney? Ms. Lanning? Ms. Miller? Mr. Richmond? She said yes. Mr. Richmond? Ms. Williams? Ms. Kearns? And Mr. Moore?
And the motion passes. Action item 8B.
Thank you. During last Wednesday's public hearing, the administration presented Plan 4BR, which was a Central and Benton model. We conducted an impact analysis and we had 57 individuals provide public comment. After that, we had our special board of education meeting where the board members engaged in dialogue about the options with the goal of bringing one plan forward for tonight with a vote. The consensus was to consider Plan 4BR tonight. We have been talking about facilities for many, many years. The board has supported a long-range plan that was a two-high-school model. I do wanna remind everyone of the Vision Forward recommendations was an, it was an extensive community engagement process. And part of that was to consolidate, right-size, make more equitable and functional facilities at all levels, elementary, middle and high school, so that curriculum and programs are equivalent and buildings at optimum efficiency. Another action step, provide a consistent middle-school model, both in configuration and curriculum, to improve academic achievement. Consistent feeder patterns were also part of Vision Forward recommendations. Plan 4BR allows us to consolidate, become more efficient as a district. It also allows us to create a consistent seven, eight middle-school model. It increases equal opportunities for students to ensure we have students with highly qualified teachers in all of our classrooms. I want to remind everyone also that we have to cut $8 million within two years. Consolidation allows us to reduce staffing through attrition. Staffing is 75% of our budget. If we do not consolidate, we still need to trim $8 million. And yes, that will include district office and administration, but it will have an impact on staffing across our entire district.
I need you to be respectful, please. I need you to stop. It's your last warning or you'll need to be removed.
And I believe that will have a negative impact on our students. This is a tough situation, no doubt. I appreciate that the board has not taken this decision lightly. They have considered 14 different plans and they have reviewed those extensively. I do wanna provide a little bit of clarification for some of the speakers. There was a concern mentioned about Rubidoo's capacity. Rubidoo is currently a middle school and its capacity is different than what it would be if it were transformed into an elementary. So that updated capacity, if Rubidoo were to become an elementary, would be between 572 and 608. So the projected enrollment of 568 would fall within that. Actually, it'd be below optimal capacity. Benton High School, there's been some chatter on social media about capacity there, even a fire inspector. We had all of that verified today. The fire inspector has told us that the capacity would be 1,336 without the gyms and 1,733 including the gyms. Again, when we mentioned this space, we talked about how it is currently configured and some of those office spaces may need to transform into instructional learning classrooms. The last piece I'd like to clarify is the concern about retrofitting Rubidoo as an elementary. The fixtures there are already for an elementary school. We would have the $150,000 cost for the playground equipment in either of those options. So I would gladly have any questions from the board or would like to hear from the board, but we would also like to move forward with a vote tonight.
I'll begin. I think my issue about the plan is the overcrowding of the schools and closing our elementary schools who are extremely high-performing. And this plan, and it's only my opinion, I think it actually goes against a lot of the mission and the vision of Vision Forward. Only I do understand about the opinions of the other members of the board and I do know that I am outvoted. I just wanted everybody, you know, to know what I think about the plan and it makes me very, very nervous about the kids in the schools, about my own child in the school, about all these kids and the position everyone is in right now.
I just have to say, as a former teacher, academics are my utmost priority. I've, I've done that my whole life and I can no longer allow all the children in our district to not have the same academic opportunity. If a student at, let's say, I'm just pulling this out, to be pulling it out, at Lafayette does not get to take a college credit course or an AP course and they come to college, instead of paying the cost of that while you're in high school, you will pay the cost of that while you are in college, which I can tell you is considerably more. I also understand that even though we have open enrollment, it is not an option for every child in our district to have the ability to go to the high school that they want to go to because of a variety of different reasons. So some children are attending a high school that really they aren't choosing to go there, but they're going there because that's where the attendance area is. I can't in good conscience no longer allow that to happen to the children in our district. I also know that it is extremely important to have a good teacher in front of every one of our children and right now, even with the way things are right now, we don't have that. We have people that are non-certified, we have people that only have two years to get certified and still are not going to be certified in good conscience. I cannot allow that to continue to happen. I care that our children in our district get the best academic opportunities that are possible. I also heard her say that we are not in a crisis, but we are heading there. Why in good conscience would I do something knowing that we have a crisis coming? That would be like knowing a tornado is coming and I can see it, but I choose to go outside instead. So my job on the board is hard. When I signed up to do this, I never in a million years dreamed I'd be sitting here tonight in this position. It is not easy. All of us on the board choose to do this and it is really hard. I've heard from lots of different people across the community and I wanna make it quite clear, despite things that were said on social media, nobody in this district is making me make the choice that I'm making except myself. And the, and the things that I've thought through over and over and over is why I'm making the choice. So right now, I would like to make a motion that we accept Plan 4BR with the ability of our administrators to make any minor adjustments they might need to make, which would not include changing any of the school closures that we have already discussed.
I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. And Ms. Rhonda, I respect your opinion. I completely do, you know, but there are lots of new teachers in the building doing all of their best and they are un-certified currently, you know, but they're in our rooms every day and we need to be respectful of that. And one of those new teachers is my daughter. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Yeah. If there are.
I admire your courage, Rhonda, because I know you're in all the buildings with all the teachers, with all the students. You're a part of encouraging college students to continue the path into education, even with all the hang-ups that are going on, even with all the salary cuts that are possible and those kind of things. So I appreciate that. For me, I'm sorry, but this sucks. It does. I get it. I get it.
I'm asking you to be respectful or we'll have to clear the room.
Excuse me. Go ahead, take me out. I don't care.
Excuse me.
Go right ahead.
Continue, Kim.
Hey, so what, what is the point of having the police here? What's the point of that?
What's the point of what?
What are we doing? What are we doing?
I just would like to explain why I'm voting this way. I, I don't need your permission. I will follow through. So here, here's the deal. I have to.
Can we take a five-minute recess, please? I need the SROs if you can come. Thank you. And please, no consequences. I just want you to calm them down. I don't want you to kick them out unless they're belligerent. What's the problem? Is there a problem out there? Kim, do you want me to take a recess or do you want me to continue?
I think they need a recess.
Kim was asking for a recess.
No, I just said they need.
I'm asking you, are you ready to continue?
Yes.
Kim, are you ready to keep talking?
Until this time, there has been, I have appreciated our small schools. I know we need smaller schools. I have no doubt of that. I have no doubt of that, but this is imperative that we change our paradigm, that we change something because we're going to lose even what we have if we don't do something different. This was a plan that was pushed through, not all of us were on board at the very beginning. A couple of us pushed and pushed for a school planned for two high schools, got it going. It's imperative. We need to do it. We need to do it. And here that we are, they're not for it. But is, there can be an opportunity later, perhaps, to get back to that, but we need this opportunity right now for all our kids to be successful, to have teachers in front of them. I know we have a lot of great teachers who are new, who may not have the tenure of other teachers, but it's imperative that we shrink that number, and that's by going with two high schools, and it spreads it across. It is an awful thing to close schools, and we don't take it lightly, but it's something that was pushed, that it was decided before it even came to us, and I have to support what our 4BR is.
Okay, guys, are we ready to take a vote? Could you call the vote, please? Excuse me?
I, I'm gonna try, I tried to sit here to be quiet, but I'm not gonna be quiet. I am so frustrated right now, so frustrated. We have put this community, ourselves, this whole city through hell, hell and back, and it's not okay. I sat here from the beginning, and I said, "Hey, let's work on other things else if we're stuck on the high schools." Whitney argued me, and now we're coming back with that. I said, "Hey, let's give facilities committee..." Nobody, I mean, not right now, not right now. I say, "Hey, let's pause. Whitney made a good point. This will not be any easier a year from now. It will not." But I'm so frustrated with the way we've handled this. This is awful, and I apologize to you guys. So again, tonight, are we ready to make a decision? Are we ready to vote? Because here I am. Are we ready, or are we not?
It's a motion in a second. It's a motion in a second. We need to take a vote. Okay, I have a motion in a second. Would you call the vote, please, Ms. Thomas?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Mr. Richmond? Ms. Chesney? Ms. Lanning? Ms. Kearns? Ms. Miller?
And the motion passes 5-2. Moving on to 8C. It's you, Dr. Hedgecore. We can take a couple minutes of a pause for people to clear the room. SROs, if you can help to clear out the room, if they're leaving, would you do something? After the rooms calm down and clear, you can start, Dr. Hedgecore.
So before you have a bid for Snap-on student toolset, this was submitted by the Automotive Technology Program from Hilliard. Basically, what these tools will bring to kids is uniformity amongst their toolset to make sure they're accustomed with tools that are used in the real-world automotive industry. So this is a sole-source bid because it is only supplied from Snap-on, and so if you open up the attachment, you can see that the compatibility, the other toolsets that they have in the building is the reason for the submittal. And at the very bottom, you can see how that is split out amongst the account codes for the total amount of $57,243.60.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay, call the vote, please. Yes. And the motion passes all approved. On my notes, it says either Tammy or Nolte.
Hey, Shannon, would you be able to speak briefly about Agenda Item E, Medicaid reimbursement?
It's the American Red Cross.
Yes, American Red Cross. This is in agreement with American Red Cross to access their training materials. This allows our nursing staff, specifically our coordinator, Tammy Smith-Hinchi, to access the training materials from American Red Cross to certify our staff in CPR, basic first aid. We have a lot of staff that are required, like coaches and certain personnel, so we need that certification, and just this agreement allows us to do that.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any questions or discussion? All right, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller? Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
And the motion passes all approved?
Good evening. Okay, so I am bringing you guys a contract for, it's with parents as teachers, so we have been a part of the Children's Trust Fund, so you've previously already approved those contracts. This is in addition to that for our perinatal visits, so it's in, right now, we can receive $90 per visit when we report that with the state. In lieu of that, if we go with the Children's Trust Fund, they will bill Medicaid, and we will receive $200 per visit, opposed to the 90. So it's just relinquishing that $90 in so that we can get the 200 through Medicaid. So I am asking for a motion to approve that.
I have a motion?
A second.
In a second? Would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
And the motion passes all approved? 8F, Ms. Dr. Davis?
This year, the Scholarship Committee is requesting to submit Student C for the MSBA Belcher Scholarship eligibility. If there are no questions, I ask the board for a motion to approve Student C.
C?
C, yes. Sorry if you can't hear me.
I just didn't understand.
Sorry, C.
I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept Student C.
I have one here.
I have a motion over...
I'll second it.
All right. It's a motion in a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
And the motion passes all approved?
Thank you.
Okay, information items, 9A.
Yeah, in front of you, you have a quarterly investment report that we give to show our investments and their performance between, for the months of July, August, and September. Please note in the operating account, you can see the minimal amount that is in that investment account due to the low balances that we had in our operational fund, and so we, you know, basically utilize the principal on that to pull that down to our UMB account, which we pay that out of. And then you can see our healthcare trust, we still have the two investments in the term series. One of those will mature here in December, and then we'll look to reinvest that. And then, of course, we have our bond proceeds for our construction projects that we've spent down to an amount below $100,000 as we continue to start to wrap some of those projects up. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
If there are no questions? It's an information item. Okay, let's move on. Board notes, I don't have anything. Does anybody else have anything?
No.
Okay, future meetings are listed on the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to 610-021, closed meetings and closed records for legal hiring, firing, discipling, or promoting of particular employees and individually identifiable personal records.
I have a motion, is there a second? I have a motion in a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yep.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?